Six o'clock, we'll go ahead and get started. We'd like to welcome everybody tonight. It's always nice to see all of our visitors here with us. This is the regular board meeting for the Rockcastle County Board of Education. The first thing on our agenda tonight is a moment of silent prayer. Amen. Let the row call note that Ms. Missy's not here tonight. Item one sees the reading of Board Team Commitments, and I have these here in front of me, so I'll just go ahead and read those. Board Team Commitments for the Rockcastle County Schools. To improve our effectiveness, the Board Team for Rockcastle County Schools commits to: Review processes and experiences to identify and direct improvements. Continuously define and work toward long-term goals which serve all students of the district. Make each decision based on facts and the best for all students. Listen to each other and speak freely. Work together, support each other, and not surprise one another. Discuss board deliberations to point of mutually agreeable resolution based on factual information. Support the majority's decision, projecting board unity towards shared goals for continuously improving district-wide student learning. Operate without personal or political agendas. Respect one another, agree to disagree respectfully. Delegate implementation to superintendent and education team and to respectfully remind each other of these commitments. Item two is adopt the agenda. We need to make an amendment. We need to add a 4K. And I think that it is listed on the computer, it's already been added. It's a MOA for ARC Rehab Therapy Services. And whenever we go to operations and actions, Ms. Carrie can give us more details about that if there's any questions.
Moved up per the agenda as amended.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor? Okay. Item three is our school and our community showcase. We're gonna flip the middle school and the high school for momentarily, Mr. Bussel's running just a little behind. So Ms. Willis, welcome. It's good to see you here.
Thank you. Good to be here. Okay, so I'm gonna pass around some of the objects that our STEM club is making and STEM class with our 3D printers that were bought with some of the extra funds from last year. They were really proud of those and wanted to show those off. So we have a lot that has been going on in our first six weeks at the middle school. And I just put together a slideshow really quickly, just some kind of different pictures highlighting a few things. We don't have time to go through everything, but one of the first things we start out the year with was Sora. Sasha came and talked to our kids about the ray of sunshine. We had that at the beginning of the year with all of the faculty, all the students at the high school. And so she came and talked to our students also. Our students were so well behaved and so well represented and respectful during this. Really appreciated. We had a line a mile long to get pictures with her afterwards, and they really loved it. Also, we had a huge number show up for the hunger walk. We had our sixth and seventh and eighth of leadership teams go. We had a speaker from middle school also, and they did a fantastic job. And they came back and talked about how much fun they had, enjoyed going and participating in that as well. Kansas City. And one of the things we want to point out was before we had the, before we were recognized for the attendance state winners for the middle school, we had a shooting stars team who had perfect attendance for the whole team two days in a row. So we gave them all pop singles and they got to go outside and play for a little bit because they did have perfect attendance. But we were also recognized as Region 13's High Attendance State Winners for Middle School with an attendance rating of ninety-five point zero nine percent. We were really proud of that, pumped up, and the kids got to choose their seats at lunch for a couple days because of that. So they were really happy. Before fall break, one of the coldest mornings we had before fall break, we did have See You at the Pole, and we had a really good turnout for that that morning. And here's some of the adults coming back in and some of the kiddos talked about just the respect that other kids had coming in, that they were telling their kiddos, their friends to be quiet, not to disrupt them, even though they didn't want to participate. So we were really proud of our kiddos for that. The U Night Club had On the Move back later part of August. And they had the, they had the best time with the go-karts in the gym and just the goggles and playing in the class there. They had a great time doing that. We gave for eighth grade night for girls' basketball and football, we gave free admission to our students. So you can see our student sections there, and we gave them prizes also. So once they came in, they put their name in a raffle, and we just threw them out for different prizes. But we had a huge turnout at both games. The middle, that football picture does not do it justice of how many kids we had show up. And then eighth grade, we've started field trips back. And our eighth graders have never been on a field trip since they were in middle school. So this was the first trip these eighth graders got to go on as middle schoolers. They really had no idea what to expect, but they were fantastic. We got all kinds of great reports back. We broke them up into groups. One team went one day, one went the next week. The Somerset Community College, and then to the park, played games and stuff the rest of the day. And then from that, we had some of our kids that signed up to also do a STEM thing through Somerset Community College also. And then eighth grade trip, we start thinking about that this time of the year. But we're raising money for our eighth grade trips, and one of the things that we did for the last hour of the day was we took them out to the track, and they walked around. We had cotton candy and concessions and a photo booth and hat day. And it was a really good day for them. They really participated in that and loved it. And then while they were there, teachers got to get together and have team planning because the way our schedule's set up this year is we have department planning every day. So teachers were able to make use of that team planning that they normally have, but this year it's a little bit different. And just to highlight really quickly some of our clubs that's going on right now, just, and this is some of them, some of them haven't started yet. We have Art Club with about seventy members, and they meet on Thursdays. Right now they're doing our backups, as you can tell, for the spooky concert and decorations for the Halloween dance. Choir and Music Club, spooky concerts the twenty-seventh in the afternoon if you want to come out to that, or the twenty-eighth at ten o'clock if you want to come in to see that. The band also has a spooky concert at the same time, so the band will perform, the choir will sing. And we also have several middle school members who are also part of the high school band as well. So really active groups there. We have FFA Club. We have fifty-five members, and they're currently, and we're doing a community service project, recycling candy wrappers after Halloween, so all kinds, I foresee lots of candy in the building after this. STEM Club with twenty-nine members, and this is the biggest we've had. October twenty-eighth is STEAM Day at the Somerset Community College London Campus. Eleven kids had to submit an essay to attend, and all eleven were accepted. U Night Club has fifty-five members, and you saw the previous pictures from that. Our Y Club has sixty-five members, and they will be attending KYA on November seventeenth through nineteenth. And forty-seven students are attending, and those numbers are probably three times the attendance that was last year. And then also we have Smile Club. There's a picture over to the side. And they want to talk about how much a smile can change somebody's day, and give a positive influence and light up a room, encourage leadership, and can spread energy. And there's some pictures from our STEAM Club. And classes. Also, they wanted me to talk about some donations. So Smile Club is gonna collect candy this month for foster children statewide. There are eight thousand five hundred thirty-one children in foster care. That's a huge number. And seven hundred ninety-seven in our region. DCBS is gonna do a trunk or treat for kids in foster care on October the twenty-first in London. So we are collecting candy for that benefit. One thing we're doing every month is we are doing the Rocket Spotlight. So if you've ever walked in, you can probably see in the hallway hanging up ROCK. And we talk about being respectful or kind of committed in time, and we talk about that every morning on announcements also. And we have a Google form that's sent out to staff and to students. And the kids get to nominate other students and staff, and so does staff. And we pick, we pick two from each grade level and two staff members who've been nominated. We put their picture up, it gets on our website, and they get some pretty neat prizes from that. And here's some upcoming events we have coming up. So it's kind of like school has started again. We're really excited. Everybody's got something going on. Eighth grade will be out of the building Friday going to Civil War United. Seventh grade's gonna go next, sorry, this Thursday on a field trip. And then we have our spooky concert and Halloween dance, and then that whole last week of October is Fred Ribbon Week. So we have a whole week planned for that. And I just wanted to say, without my team, none of this would be possible, and without my staff, none of this would be possible. Every one of them are there to give everything that they have to give us. It's a great staff and a great place to be.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willis.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all for having us here tonight. I'm Emma Ballinger. I'm the president of the Student Council at the high school.
My name's Cory Tompkins. I'm also part of the Student Council.
I'm Ella Bussel, I'm junior. They're both seniors. And I'm just gonna run down the rest of our council real quick. We have another, all three junior members would be Kaylee Collins, Callie Binge, and Olivia Shepherd. We have two sophomore members, Broly Mullins and Anna Collett. And this year we decided to like expand our council. So starting next year, we're gonna have three per grade level, and we went ahead and did that this year with our freshmen. So we have three freshmen, and that is Jared Barron, Addison Carter, and Ellen McKinney.
Yes, and we also have one more senior with Cory and I, and we have Silas Durham on there with us as well. So we just wanted to thank you all for having us tonight and letting us share what's going on at the high school and what we've been up to over at our CHS. So one of the first things that we wanted to touch on was our Student Council's social media. So we're really big on social media with our Student Council. We're very active on our Facebook page and on our Instagram. There's a little screenshot of the things that we post, lots of graphics, just kind of relaying information of things that are happening at the high school. And we kind of use that as a voice to help students figure out what's going on, where they need to be, and what's just happening around the Rock. Next up, we have some extracurriculars at the Rock. So as you all know, we have tons of clubs, tons of things going on, but lately we just had Club Fair. So that was to where students could go around and visit a booth from each club offered at the high school. And they were able to do a few minutes talking to members of that club and getting information on whether or not they wanted to join, and then they were able to sign up for that club after Club Day. And then we have Link Crew. So Link Crew came to the high school one day before school started, and we gave tours around to incoming freshmen and new students who just needed to know their way around the high school. We answered questions, and we did all that good stuff. So it was really fun, and then on the first day of school, we all wore our Link Crew shirts to help give tours throughout the day. And then with Gear Up, that is for our juniors and they, and sophomores, juniors and sophomores. And they have been able to go on plenty of field trips. They went to Pipepool a few weeks ago to tour the college, and they get to travel around. I know our Gear Up gives them plenty of opportunities, and it's really awesome that we have that at the high school for them. And then we also have our sports right now. It's been volleyball season, football season, and cheerleading's been going on. So there's just a few pictures from the game. We've had really good turnout at the games this year, and it's been really fun to attend all those sporting events. And then we had Rock Moves Day. So every year at the high school, we do a Rock Moves Day. So students can pick one station per class period, and they can go around and do those activities. So we had Goggle Ball, Bubble Soccer, Spike Ball. And then in the mornings, we had, we had a race. So we did a one and a half mile race that morning. And anybody was welcome to sign up and run that race. And then we had yoga in the afternoon and Just Dance, all kinds of fun stuff just to get our students at the high school active and get them moving around, and so they had a fun day of activists. Okay, so for community involvement, so far this semester, we did the Hunger Walk, and I know that some of the elementary schools were involved, the middle school was there. So that was kind of a way where the high school students could kind of see the entire district was there at once. And I think that's important that we are involved with the elementary schools and the middle school because we are one big family, even though we're all separated day by day. And then the boys' basketball team just hosted a 5K fundraiser where they started in Broadhead and ran around the streets of Broadhead and did a little fundraiser for them, got people in the community active. So that was really successful. And then the Bittersweet, we have Key Club posted, but we had a lot of involvement in Bittersweet. I know that Drama had not only a very successful booth, but they also had a float in the parade. And those kids have been talking about that all week. They had so much fun. Even though it was like two Saturdays, two Saturdays ago, I'm still hearing about how fun the Bittersweet Festival was. So we had lots of kids there. Key Club actually helped with the Kiwanis, was doing a 5K that day, and they helped with that because they, we are affiliate, Key Club is affiliated with Kiwanis, so they did get to help with that 5K race. And then Student Spotlight, we partnered with Army National Guard and Sergeant Rob Hamlin, and he is sponsoring us by providing plaques and helping us give recognition to students who do a little extra at school. So teachers are opened up on the first week of the month. There's a Google form, and all month long they nominate students. And then it's decided from there, either if you're nominated, like if you're nominated two times, three times, then you're pulled from kids who are nominated more than once, and then it just goes like how many times you're nominated, and then we pick from there. But actually, Anna is in charge of our Student Spotlight. She does a great job with that. And this last month, we didn't have one in August because it was such a short month, but for September, it was Dylan Thompson and Emily Bowman, and Dylan was actually nominated, I think, three times, which is really a big deal because teachers choose one upperclassman and one underclassman every month, and that's from all seven of their classes. So it's a big honor. Okay, I'm gonna introduce homecoming real quick, and then I'll let Cory get started. But for this year's homecoming, our theme is rocking in pink, and that is for breast cancer awareness because October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and we only did have one home game. And we knew that there was just gonna be so much going on, and that we wanted to make sure that breast cancer awareness got the same recognition that it normally does, even though we had to cram everything down in this one little home game. So for pink homecoming at the Rock, we're doing Spirit Week. It starts next Monday. We have all kinds of fun days planned out. We actually got to do the T-shirts for only five dollars this year, thanks to our sponsors. So that, I think we like doubled the amount of T-shirts that were ordered, like district-wide. There were, I mean, Broadhead Elementary, they ordered a ton. So we're really hoping to see a good turnout at the game, just everyone coming together as a community, doing something good, giving back to breast cancer awareness, and then also giving us that sense of like community and home in that we're all doing something together.
The Student Council has been putting countless hours into making homecoming for this year, and I would say this is one of the biggest projects we have been working on this year. As you can see, we have many sponsorships for homecoming this year as, to help us build a more, better scholarship for homecoming king and queen. And I would say the Mount Vernon Animal Clinic has been our biggest sponsorship this year so far. Homecoming scholarships and opportunities, along with the title of Homecoming King and Queen, which from the sponsorships I just mentioned from the last slide, is to go towards a five hundred dollar scholarship. And from our previous recipients of last year's, they have used it towards Georgetown College, Western Kentucky University, and Eastern Kentucky University.
We just want to thank you all again for letting us come out and speaking to you all. And we thank you all for all your support of Student Council and all of our CHS, and we're very thankful we got to come out.
And a shameless little follow us on Instagram, Facebook. We'd love to have you guys on our pages.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you all. Our Student Council members, if you all don't mind to hang around for just one second. Mr. Rufford has a presentation for both the high school and the middle school.
So Ms. Jessica mentioned that the middle school was the winner of the High Attendance State. That's sponsored by the Kentucky Directors, the DPP, the Kentucky Directors of Human Development. We've not been able to do this for several years. And so the thirteenth region is our region, and there's probably, there's a large high school division and a large middle school division. There's probably twenty schools in each one. And so both our high school and middle school won High Attendance State, which, which was, which is awesome. So they're gonna go to the state now, and if they win at the state level, they're one of sixteen schools, and they'll get five hundred dollars for their school. So if you guys will come over, I'd like to present you, Rockcastle County Hospital, with this certificate for High Attendance State. I don't know if you all want to, you all want, you all want to come over and get behind them.
We want a picture of the.
We want a picture of the.
And Ms. Willis, if you'll come up, middle school also won. And I think we were the only district, the only district I saw that had good winners. So again, middle school, theirs was ninety-five point oh nine. So they're a contender to win the state. That's a really high percentage, so.
Thanks.
Congratulations to both of you all. That's just really remarkable that I have two of our schools in the lead,
and we're hopeful that, that we'll be competitive at the state level and that you all will be the recipient of the five hundred dollars.
And I love the Student Council. It's wonderful. For my incoming freshman, she's freshman now, it's been great. So I really appreciate all you all do. It's great. I know it's a lot of work.
And I'll put in a plug for our Student Council, you know, they've won the last two years in a row, Student Council of the Year for the state, so very, very active, not only locally, but on the regional and state level. So they have a lot to be proud of.
We just got an email two or three nights ago. They want us to present at the state conference for our social medias.
Awesome.
As always, we're very proud of all of you, and thank you, Ms. Rachel, for what you do. You're a great sponsor.
I just wanted to say that, you know, I say this every time we have a group of young people here. You are very impressive. You make me feel good about the future, that we have something to look forward to. And Emma, the fact that you are a senior may make me cry, okay? But I'm just really proud of you guys. And Ms. Willis, I can't commend you enough. I mean, you're, I hear such great things, so I just want, I want to thank you. Thank you for all of your hard work. And the fact that we have been recognized for attendance speaks volumes for our district. And what a lot of, young people sometimes don't realize this, but you can't receive a valuable education unless you're in school building. And by being in the school building, not only are you promoting your own personal education, but there's opportunities for all of our children because it raises the resources that we need in order to fund things like all of these programs that you have. And it's just great. And thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Rufford, I'm sure you've done a lot of pushing for that attendance.
We'll do what we can. After the last two years.
Yeah.
If you look at our, we look at our department report, God question, but if you look at the comparison month one to month two, it's really amazing how much better month two was.
I think people are getting excited about being in school again. There's, it's a norm. It's a normal for us.
Well, and it's the field trips.
Everything that is a plus to going, for, you know.
And the eighth grade night, I was there for football. That was almost like a high school game.
I was there, yeah.
It was amazing, the crowd. So even at events, the.
And I think that it's the key for, one of the things that Rockcastle County has to offer everyone is community, like you, like you guys were saying. And, you know, when you're young, sometimes you think, oh, I can't wait to move away. You know, everybody knows your business and all that, but when you get older, you realize how important that is, that everybody knows you, and they care for you, and they're concerned about you, and so, but you are impressive, and I can't wait to hear things in your future, so. The next thing we have on our agenda tonight is item three sees Deco Architects, and it is, it's always exciting to hear what you have to say.
fresh now, it's been great. So, I really appreciate all you all do. It's great. I know it's a lot of work.
And I'll put in a plug for our Student Council, you know, they've won the last two years in a row, Student Council of the Year for the state, so, very, very active, not only locally, but on the regional and state level, so they have a lot to be proud of.
We just got an email two or three nights ago, they want us to present at the state conference for our social medias.
Awesome.
Oh, that's right.
As always, we're very proud of all of you, and thank you, Ms. Rachel, for what you do. You're a great sponsor. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that, you know, I say this every time we have a group of young people here, you are very impressive. You make me feel good about the future, that we have something to look forward to. And, Emma, the fact that you are a senior may make me cry, okay? But, I'm just really proud of you guys. And Ms. Willis, I can't commend you enough. I mean, you're, I hear such great things, so I just want, I wanna thank you. Thank you for all of your hard work. And the fact that we have been recognized for attendance speaks volumes for our district, and what a lot of, young people sometimes don't realize this, but you can't receive a valuable education unless you're in school building. And, um, by being in the school building, not only are you promoting your own personal education, but there's opportunities for all of our children because it raises the resources that we need in order to fund things like all of these programs that you have. And it's just great. And thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Rufford, I'm sure you've done a lot of pushing for that attendance?
We'll do what we can. After the last two years.
Yeah.
If you look at our, which we look at our department report, God question, but if you look at the comparison, month one to month two, it's really amazing how much better month two was.
I think, I think people are getting excited about being in school again. There's, it's a norm, it's a normal for us.
Well, and it's like the field trips.
Everything that is a plus to going, for, you know.
And I, the eighth grade night, I was there for football. Like, that was almost like a high school game. I thought you were, it was amazing, the crowd. So, even at events, the, this, the
Yeah.
And I, I think that it's the key for, one of the things that Rockcastle County has to offer everyone is community, like you, like you guys were saying. And, you know, when you're young, sometimes you think, oh, I can't wait to move away, you know, everybody knows your business and all that. But when you get older, you realize how important that is, that everybody knows you, and they care for you, and they're concerned about you, and so, but you are impressive, and I can't wait to hear things in your future, so. Uh, the next thing we have on our agenda tonight is Item Three C is Deco Architects, and it is, it's always exciting to hear what you have to say.
I'm Chris Phillips at the architect, but here to present other video, looking at the new middle school project, as promised by Eric Phillips at the last meeting. So, I guess we'll open it up for discussion, just to get your thoughts on it. Do you have any questions?
Always love watching.
Yeah, me too. This is our favorite part. Just be honest, this is the great part.
It's very exciting, and the changes every time. Um, so, what, what next? I know he had said something about we are going to be have to vote.
Yes, so that will be at our, at our November meeting, that they'll come to us with that, what we have to approve at that time.
And at that point, we'll bring a drawing set that'll be pages of what we've been doing on the technical side.
Uh, what do you do exactly?
I'm the project manager.
So, we, we have a meeting set up on Monday, so we're gonna, we've been looking at like some square footage of offices, um, so we've made a few tweaks, so we're gonna wrap up some of that on Monday with our, with our final meetings. I think we have the classrooms in order, but just the office spaces and entrances and, and conference rooms, and just looking at sizes and how to best fit all of our needs into that space. So, we'll follow up again on Monday if I'm lost in that.
How many classrooms?
I believe we have eighteen at the moment. Um, I think we actually have an extra one than what we were planning for the school, and I think for that one, we're planning on using it for JAG, and, um, I forgot what the second one was, but it was another program that was maybe meeting one or two days a week that could be in that space.
And then the existing gym, is that still being worked on? I notice it wasn't in, so I figured it would still be
That's still part of the project, yes, absolutely.
Still developing. Ms. Willis, are you pleased too? Got you here, we'll pick your brain.
I'm excited, just working on it.
Yes, that's good.
This is not a blueprint thing at all, and I know that's probably another decision. The, I see all the stools in it, and they look great, but I've also seen how short those kids are, come, some of the sixth graders are. It's like, maybe something down the road that we wanna
And that'll be personalized down soon?
Yeah, we'll look at, like, the research behind the seating when we get a bit, a little bit closer to making those decisions about how we will, how we'll, we'll order furniture and
I just don't want Ms. Willis having to have the sixth grade onto the stool for lunch.
So, will teens be able to choose their classroom ideas, or is it gonna be standardized across the grade levels?
So, I think that's in one of those calls that once we get closer, we can make those calls.
Yeah, and Ms. Jessica's, yeah, Ms. Jessica's meeting with us when we have our meetings, so she'll be, you know, the school representation and be able to take ideas back and present it to the staff, and then give us feedback, and so, when we get to the, to those more detailed points.
Thank you very much. So, it's, it is very exciting for us to see this. And I've been a part of some building projects before. We've never had videos, and, I mean, it, it's just, it's, you're making, your vision, we can see it. So, thank you very much, we do appreciate you. Item Three D, the Stillwell Award Presentation, Excellence in Technology. Ms. Carrie?
So, um, it goes without saying that COVID really, really, um, impacted the way that we provide instruction, um, to our students, and without our technology team, that instruction would not have been possible. So, um, this evening, we are going to present some very, very key and important people, some, an important award called the Stillwater Award, and I have a proclamation that I'm going to read, um, that will give you a little bit of information about the history of this award. So, since nineteen ninety-two, Kentucky Education Technology System, or KETS, has been the pioneer and national leader in most aspects of the educational technology investment, infrastructure, and support for public school districts. A vital part of this effort has been strong partnerships with individuals and entities that continue to assist the Kentucky Department of Education in fulfilling its mission to students and the citizens of the Commonwealth. Named after the late William E. Stillwell, the Stillwell Award is presented to the unsung heroes that have gone above and beyond the call of duty in educational technology. They devote their efforts entirely to our K-12 students, teachers, and administrators. Identified by their red suspenders, the annual Stillwell Award winners represent the best of the best, who show up daily in their tireless service to Kentucky schools and to the high-quality education technology services and supports that are required. One of the U.S. Army's most prestigious awards is the Meritorious Service Award, the MSM. The twenty-twenty Bill Stillwell Award is just as distinctive. For twenty-twenty, a unique version of the Red Susender Award, a medal in the form of a celebratory coin has been commissioned for presentation to critical K-12 education technology staff in all Kentucky K-12 school districts and the KDE Office of Educational Technology. This distinctive coin signifies the individual's successful and meritorious tour of duty from March tenth, twenty-twenty, to March eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, providing quality education technology service on and beyond the school campus for Kentucky K-12 students, teachers, staff, and families throughout the twenty-four-month core of the pandemic. This service provided the connection with students and families to their school for the continuation of learning and student health supports. Therefore, let it be known that the twenty-twenty Stillwell Award is being presented here on October eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, to these education technology leaders in Rockcastle County schools. As a simple, but sincere, and heartfelt way to say thank you for your accomplishments, your dedication, and your sacrifices over those twenty-four months, as well as for your continued persistence towards excellence, tonight, we are presenting this award to five of our technology leaders here in the district. Without these five individuals, I think it's very safe to say that the education that we were able to provide to our students during the pandemic would not, clearly not have happened. And these people, these individuals went above and beyond, they worked countless, countless hours above their hours that they should have been at a school building, or at central office, or at the technology department. They gave, and they gave, and they gave, often at the sacrifice of their own families. Um, I wish that we could do more, but this is just one way that we can say thank you for your service to Rockcastle County schools. Um, you, you are the people that helped us through the pandemic. So, from the bottom of my heart, and I know from this board, we say thank you. So, at this time, we will present, um, can I say NGD here to give these? Um, our first recipient is Mr. Trent Clark. Our second recipient is Mr. Brandon Reynolds. Ms. Kayla Adams. Mr. Dawson Nicely. And Mr. Camden Meek. And I will say Dawson and Camden were students trying to endure the pandemic and go, and go through the pandemic, and they were helping as student workers, and just played such a significant role.
Thank you all.
Dawson was a co-op student at one point. Dawson was a co-op student. Trent was not, I don't think.
That was way before your time went down.
I was so long in here since the beginning. I almost felt like I was retired for just a minute.
That cannot happen.
Well, you know, like Ms. Carrie said, it's a very small token of appreciation that there's no words. And, um, I don't know how many times I've had to turn to Brandon to help me with just like, little bitty stuff, but I thought it was a mountain.
I text him, I text him at ten-thirty at night and say, "Help!"
Yes.
I still laugh. I remember when I was begging Jenny to spend fifty thousand dollars, and then a few months later, we were at one four, one million dollars. So, it wasn't just Chromebooks, Chromebooks were a big part, but, you know, we added wireless to the building, we added wireless, replaced wireless inside the building, we done
And crunch time, too.
Every, every aspect, everything with timeline, uh, teachers learned his school classroom, students learned his school classroom, um,
And taught slots around the community.
When our kids went back to school.
We worked with fire, you know, Camden even helped as a firefighter, he helped me talk to some fire departments, because they were, they had, we had access, wireless access points in the fire departments. So, Camden gave me ideas for that. We, I mean, it was, it was big, big, my job, can't believe it.
And I know it's been tough for everybody, especially you all, but look how far we've come. In those two years, I mean, it's like a light speed difference, I think, now, so.
Well, and that technology was there for our students when they needed it. There were other districts that waited months and months and months.
That's why we were begging for the fifty thousand.
We were ready.
All the Chromebooks are gonna leave all in the world, they're all gonna be gone.
Yeah. And the WICRC, so, yeah, thank you all so much.
Item Four is our Operations and Actions. We did make an amendment to that, as, so, uh, Ms. Carrie, do you wanna explain anything about the ARC Rehab Therapy?
Yes, we currently have a contract with ARC Rehab Therapy, but it is only for PT services. Um, we are adding OT and speech to that. Only on an emergency basis will we need to use those services, but for instance, if we have an occupational therapist or speech therapist that has to go on leave for any reason, then a substitute cannot provide those services to students. So, in order for those services to be provided and for us to stay in a timeline and in compliance with a student's IEP, we have to contract out with a certified person. So, we just need this contract on backup in case we need it.
Anybody have any questions? No, I need a motion to approve Operations and Actions?
Make a motion.
All in favor?
Yes.
Item Five A, review and approve the purchase of four new school buses. Mr. Hawkins?
So, this request is for four buses, uh, the two thousand, I guess, twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um, three of those buses were Thomas buses, one will be an international bus. Um, options pretty much is the same that we've done in the past, cameras, um, storage compartments. The one big difference that we did add on this year was window tinning, and that's something that it just really came down in price over the last several years, and it's just kind of a no-brainer not to go ahead and do that to help out a little bit with warmer days. So, um, these are all four full-size school buses, full-size regular, regular route school buses. Good question?
I do have a question. Did we ever receive our buses that we paid for last year for, that?
No.
Okay, I was just curious, okay, so.
Soon, soon. I've been told we'd have them by the end of November, that we ordered over a year ago.
Yeah, I, I was just curious if we'd ever received those.
And the sale of our surplus, which?
Still there, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's only in next Monday, in one month.
Do we normally buy four? I've seen like just about three.
It's kind of varied. Three is, three is our
Minimum.
Our, our minimum number to kind of maintain. Well, you can go back to eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. We only bought two each of those years, so we got a little bit behind. Not, not, not really behind, but, um, yeah.
And we are in the budget for four already?
Yes.
Move the purse.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. All in favor? Review and approve a monthly financial report, Ms. Jenny?
Month ending in September, we're, we're moving on in this school year. Um, if you've had an opportunity to, um, to review those documents, if you have any questions, um, be glad to answer those for you, and, um, we mention this quite often, but just remember that fund, too, um, when you see that balance there, those grants are When you see that balance there, those grants are on a reimbursable basis, so.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Jenny? If not, any motion to approve financial reports?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Item five C, review and approve the board nominee for the local planning committee. This is a board member.
Ms. Anna currently serves in, on the role of our board member for our LPC. This, we are reconvening our LPC because it is time for us to redo our district facilities plan. Anna has previously served on, on this. And are you willing to continue that service?
Absolutely. If that's fine with you all.
Well, I make a, I nominate you just so long as you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I like it. Motion.
All in favor?
Yes.
Anna, you continue doing what you do.
Thank you all.
Whatever it is that you take personally. Item five D, review and approve the committee member nominee for the local planning committee.
Okay, the local planning committee, a requirement for this is we have three community members. We have advertised that on our district website, and we had three people apply for that. Those, those community members are Mr. Jason Woods, Mr. Josh Bray, and Mr. Roy Reynolds. So we just need to move to approve those three, um, community members.
There's two Josh Bray that I know of in the county.
This is Josh Bray, our state representative.
Okay, thank you.
Move the proof.
Second.
All in favor? That's how he gets us more money. He'll save the maid and get us some more money. That's the only reason I voted for him.
Looks like a good group of people, the whole.
Okay. Item five E is review and approve the full local planning committee. Would you, uh, name those?
Yes, that is in your documents, but I will read those. These, we have chosen these people. This is a requirement from KDE as to how they're chosen. We have a parent member from Roundstone Elementary, Mr. Michael King. A Broadhead Elementary parent, Casey Nicely. Mount Burn, or, excuse me, Rockcastle County Middle School parent, Vanessa Bullock. Mount Vernon Elementary parent is Mr. Eric Adams. And our teacher representative, we have an SBDM member from Roundstone, Mr. Jeff Tipton. SBDM member from Rockcastle County Middle School, Ms. Melissa Renner. SBDM member from Mount Vernon Elementary, Ms. Elena Taylor. And the SBDM member from Rockcastle County High School is Mr. Isaac McCreary. Our principals that will serve on this are the high school principal, Mr. J.D. Bussel. Broadhead principal, Mr. Mike Williams. Mount Vernon Elementary principal, Ms. Becky Smith. Roundstone Elementary, Mr. Chris Bishop. Our facilities director will serve, Mr. Trent Clark. Mr. Marcus Repert will serve the central office, representing the central office. Mr. Hal Holbrook, our county judge executive, will serve. And then I just read our community members. Ms. Anna will be our board member, and I serve on that as superintendent. So we just need to approve this list.
Motion.
Motion approved. Call in favor?
Yep.
Item six A, review superintendent's personnel action report. Give you all just a moment to look over that, to see if you have any questions. Do we have any jobs posted right now?
Yes, we have our list here. We have a social studies teacher and science teacher at the middle school. The assistant principal position at Rockcastle County High School, and they are actually doing interviews for that as we speak. We do have an itinerant special education teacher posted that will serve all of the schools. And then classified, we have, um, Broadhead Elementary has an instructional assistant. Um, Mount Vernon Elementary, um, has an instructional assistant that will be hired today pending SBDM approval. Instructional assistant at the middle school. Boys and girls track coach at the middle school. Middle school volleyball coach. Assistant boys basketball coach at the middle school. Assistant boys baseball coach, assistant boys basketball coach, and assistant softball coach at the high school. That's a lot of, it's, it's time for those coaching assistants to roll over. And as, 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 um, people's children move from the middle school to the high school, then they may resign, and those assistants may not be coaching. Or the same as if someone graduates from high school, then their parent typically doesn't continue in that role. So it's, it's time for those.
Item seven, department reports. I'm not sure if anyone wants to speak up. How do you want to do that to Carrie? I know you've all submitted your.
Yes, if you're, if they submitted, if you all are okay with that.
I'm okay. I've read everything that I had.
I do want to say something. There's a Facebook post going around about free hotspots from the mobile. We, we haven't officially promoted that. The reason we haven't promoted that is because while they are free, they only have 100 gigabytes of data per year. That is not very much. So while it is free, you do get a free device. You can sign up for a free hotspot. It will be you, 100 gigabytes of data. It says, I think, is equivalent to 140 hours of streaming video, which is not very much at the time span of a year. So just keep that in mind. That's why we've not promoted that too much. Because, but I know it's there, and people are working to it. I signed up for it myself. But I know that, you know, once you reach that, you will have to pay to continue to use it. Like, you know, it's, it's not just, it's not really just free. Because for most of our kids, they're going to go straight to YouTube, watch videos, and in two weeks, it's gone. And it'll renew in the next year, but not until the next year. When we looked at those prices, we looked this morning and Trent noticed it, but it's like $50 a month for 50 gigabytes. So, so that's, that's, that data will be gone very quickly. So just know that, that's, if you see that, know that's why we haven't really promoted that with everybody. If they want to do it, they're welcome to. But I feel like it would almost be setting our parents up to give them a bill. Right? They think, they think it's free. It's kind of false. So that's the way I feel. So that's why we have to promote. Just, I just want to make sure everybody knew that, since that's circulating socially.
I kind of want to ask, it's for you. The two-factor authentication, talk about that a little bit. How cumbersome is that going to be? Is that fingerprinting? Is that just codes, two passcodes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Could be a text message, could be an email, could be a phone call. There's, there is an authenticator app for, for most of our teachers. So it's, it's a Microsoft thing, and most of our teachers at this point don't use too much Microsoft stuff.
So what's it for? Is it for certain data, certain student data?
It's like a protection.
It's, it's just, it's just for that Microsoft account. So for us right now, in this stage, we're kind of, it will not be a big deal. If we want to use Teams, it'll be a big deal. If we want to use Word Online Vocational School, kids could have some issue, not the kids, the teachers could have some issues. Because they're still going to use Word, really Word Online, like OneDrive. Pretty much, we're in the Google world. That's, it's a requirement, though. I put it on there because it's a requirement pushed down by the state. Everybody's moving. Everybody has to move to it. We have no choice. It will also mean some, some of the state bought some services that makes us be required into that. So, um, we're, we're going to have cloud-based password reset. Right now, if we want to reset your password, you need to be in the district. And when you reset your password, the password sinks one way. It goes from your, your Windows computer to your Google account, and it sinks that way. And anything else that uses your Google account, but it will go from your Microsoft account in the cloud and then go backwards.
Right.
So it'll, so now, so that, that's a good thing. It'll help us. There's also some password reset reminders. We, we do that now. I have a script that does that now. But there's a Microsoft product that they bought for everybody in the state that'll just remind everybody to reset their password and then make it easier. It will help our staff because it'll make us easier to reset our password. But most of our staff will not ever know.
I was afraid it was everything. Because it's, it's not hard, but it's cumbersome, you know, to do.
So are all districts doing this?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's mandated.
Because we know.
Google will come. Google will affect us the most. We're going to do, we're doing Microsoft now. Google will be here next. And then when they do, it'll be, it'll be a text message on the phone. It'll be an app with a code.
That's what I was going to ask you, because you know, you can do the fancy finger, things, the keyfolds. I didn't know what you were thinking.
So, so the first thing we'll do when we go Google, and Microsoft will be as well, is when they're in the district, they won't have to worry about that.
Right.
So if they're in district, they'll be fine. It'll only be when they're home, right? And then, then there'll be other rules, like if somebody, um, somebody decides to go to India on a mission trip, they won't be able to log in. They'll have to tell me they're going to India first, and I can allow them to log in from wherever in the world. But there's, you know, we're in a, we're in a little wall, right? You can't be in Canada and log in your school email account now, um, just because too, too many tunnels and bad things can happen. And so we want to, if they're here, then it'll be easy. But if they're at home, even if they're at home, and so, you know, they'll have to use one of those apps or a text message, or they'll have to not work at home.
With a closed service, a closed network, internet.
This first phase for Microsoft will be fairly easy for everybody, except for us, who have to use Teams sometime. It'll be harder for us.
One more step.
Yeah. But that's, I mean, that's the world, that's the world we're in now. We have to protect, you know, that'll be email, that'll be student information. We're moving toward one password. So it'll be toward one password. So right now, our Google password's the same, our Windows password's the same, our Microsoft online stuff's the same. Kids that use clever, their passwords are the same. That's our goal. It's almost always a Google account now, and that's the account they use. But when you go with one password, you have to make sure that one password's really secure. So that's, that's, that's horrible.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything you want to share?
We talked about attendance, but I want to compliment Mr. Repert and everybody else involved in the attendance. All those attendance figures looked great, and the improvement from August to September. So hopefully we can keep that up.
All that's COVID, obviously, it's better. You know, we had a rough stretch there. I hope y'all saw our lift-up attendance. We're trying to start that, and that'll start in the next month. You'll get messages about your child and their absences. So hopefully, things like that are helping, and our principals and frisky staff are doing everything that they can to.
And so that's another question. I have that, and then along with the, um, I guess, your child's web activity. Is that two separate entities? Will that ever be something that could be app-worthy or anything along those lines? I don't know.
I don't know, but you have to answer that.
Okay.
Every job. Did you say for attendance?
Yeah, they'll, like, yeah.
The LIFT grant, not the LIFT grant. I'm taking us back to another grant. The attendance, the LIFT program attendance is through Infinite Campus.
Okay.
The message will come through, I see. And it will, it will tell you, uh, your child's, um, how many absences they have, and you have information you can call. And it's, and this is a study with Harvard, and, and so it's, it's free. Hopefully, we'll be able to see effectiveness of this messaging system. It's all, it's.
Did you do an update, or is it a have-to-go look-and-find kind of?
No, it will give you an update.
Okay, like it does now.
All parents can now prepare in portal. They can already go and check.
Yes, I didn't know, you know, I don't.
But that is different than what, you're right.
But now, so yours is a text or an email for the web notification?
Yep, and we, and we enrolled, you know, we asked for participation. We got some. And then if kids, forever, if kids have searched for something bad, I just put their parents in it. But now, every parent is enrolled. If their email address exists in Infinite Campus, if I know their email, then they're enrolled to receive those reports.
Sending that out to every parent or just doesn't need? Okay.
Every student who's, who has a guardian, one or two, two guardians. So I can only do two guardians, so two guardians per student, and then multiples. Like, I have three kids, four kids in school now.
Yeah.
I have four kids in school now, and I get a report for all four in Carpeville, so.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's going to help because it'll show, you'll, it'll show parents what kids are doing. If they're doing nonsense stuff, it'll show them that they're on already. It'll show them, it'll show them some time. And then, um, I didn't like promote this in a single article, but once they get that email, you can create your own account. So you can very easily create your own account and log into that website. And from there, you can see, like, it's not real time, but it's about 10 minutes delayed. So from there, I don't even have to wait for the email. I can go right in. And there's some options I'm looking at. There's the possibility in the future, um, lots of times, parents want their kid's internet shut off on the Chromebook. And so they're, I'm looking at the possibility of being able to let them log into the portal and say.
Does that give us progress? Is there any way that those programs are linked to this that'll give you progress on what they're doing?
No, it's all, it's all, it couldn't be that. That'd be great, but, no, it's all separate.
I'd seen, uh, your online registration. You still?
I'll go mention that. We're, so last year, we probably got 85%. And that's important because that gives our office staff, they have to call home. Those phone numbers are accurate. We know that parents complete that at least in the beginning of the year. So when I did this last week, well, this was before fall break, when I printed that off, we were at 87% or whatever. We're closer to 90 now, and I want to brag on Sherri McKinney. Everybody did great on that because it's amazing. But here we are in October, and we get almost 90% of our parents have completed that. Just, it's, that's awesome. Ms. Sherri McKinney at the high school, she's got all hers. She's our attendance clerk there, and she heads that up at the high school, and she's done an amazing job. They have every parent that's completed that, Rockcastle County High School. So that's a wonderful thing, and I want to brag on her for that. So she does a fantastic job at getting that done. Maybe it's still got a little bit, but everybody's doing great. And Ms. Reeb was, we're going to have to do another, so I appreciate them.
It's just so important that we have updated contact information.
Mr. Trent, I guess I, I was curious about Mount Vernon.
That's like where we are in project. Really close. I spent all day over there today in the boiler room. Kind of got everybody together. CMTA was there, uh, M-4 was there. That's our controls contractor. And we worked together to figure out a solution to get those boilers online. That's really the only thing we have left as far as that. Then there'll be some probably punch list. We'll adjust things just a little bit to make it how we want it. And it's pretty much going to be over. Everything's cleaned up, uh, looks good. A few ceiling tiles are still left that are dirty, need to be replaced or cleaned. Really not a lot left with it. There's a few outside air dampers need to be adjusted. Just small stuff, punch list stuff.
I have to ask this. I know this is very petty. What about the bell? Did you, I mean, I know that, I know.
The doorbell.
Is it working now?
Because I might know the door the other day.
We've got a temporary fix for that. Those parts where there's been so much security emphasis put on, uh, school, schools right now. Those entryway access controls are really hard to get. We've had them ordered since, I think, June. And. It's, it may have been May. I mean, it's been a long time. We planned ahead to, we, to have it in place by school, but it's just very difficult. And, uh, we're just kind of in a holding pattern, but we're, we're okay with what we have. We're in compliance for sure.
I was just curious because there for a couple of weeks, I was knocking, and they, I mean, they'll come. And look, you don't go through those doors. I mean, they're like, it's like, they're like linebackers there.
In the, the middle school, the geothermal, that's just, we're exploring that to see if that's possible.
Absolutely. We, I mean, there's so much tax incentive there, and that's just basically, they're going to cut us a check for 40% if we use geothermal. If we, if we use gas, we lose, we lose that. You know, we don't get anything. So, I mean, it, just be financially responsible as well as, I guess, energy savings down the road to go ahead and look at it. And just see what kind of geology we have there. We don't really know. We drill the wells, we, we won't know. Hopefully, it'll be rock.
Roundstone.
Yep, hopefully, that'll be, that'll be what it is.
And the central office, little Thomas's office is doing better.
He's got, he's got the penthouse suite.
It hadn't rained since we fixed his wall. It shouldn't have, it shouldn't have waited a month.
Now I'm going to pick on Mr. Thomas. So we get our scores, I guess it's the summative assessment now coming up soon, right? Yes.
Yes, the public release is next Tuesday, February 18.
Yes. We don't have any feelers out yet about things. You may, but we'll know in a couple of months.
Everything's embargoed.
Yeah, until it has to be. I'm excited about those.
Ms. Renner, do you have anything? We've not seen you for a while.
Ms. Renner, I have our preschool numbers and things updated on there, if you noticed those. We do have, um, larger numbers for our preschool groups, so I'm, I'm happy about that. We're getting some other, other students in. It's going through interventions during the process of being enrolled, so.
We're very pleased with our, our preschool numbers being up. I mean, that's hopeful for our future and very excited about that.
Carrie, do you have anything?
Um, I just want, do want to comment that, um, this week is National School Lunch Week. So it's a great opportunity to say thank you to our cafeteria staff and Ms. Jennifer for all the work that they do in, in feeding our kids. It's just, that's a tremendous responsibility and often goes overlooked. But, you know, without that smile in the morning and that, that, that hot breakfast, you know, a lot of kids wouldn't have that. And we're so thankful for all of our cafeteria workers and everything that they do. It's just an integral part of our school buildings. And thank you, Ms. Jennifer, for leading.
And we do have a Facebook page, too, so if you get a chance to go. I'm trying to put pictures. Every, um, staff and every school is trying to really celebrate this week, and principals are making announcements every day, like, "That's a big week." And I said, "Oh, I'm going to do it." And so typed that big announcement for them. So just giving, you know, a little bit about the history of National School Lunch Week and how important it is that every child gets a hot meal and to celebrate that and the work that our staff does. They work so hard. So, yeah, fun week.
Matt, you have anything?
I think it's also school principals' month, so I think, I can't keep up, but I think I saw that. So appreciate all our principals and the work that they do. And I know none of them are here right now, but appreciate them, and I cannot imagine the stress and the strain of the last two and a half years of being a principal and what they've dealt with, but.
Couple of them out there that were.
Yeah, yeah. I appreciate you all that have done it and those that are doing it right now, so.
I don't think I have anything, just accolades. It's awesome. Great place to be.
Just thank, thank you all. Thank our district for all they do.
I don't have anything. I just, thank you. Um, we have visitors tonight. Thank you for coming. I don't know if we should consider Ms. Connie a visitor. I mean, you're here every month, so you might as well just sit up at one of the tables if you want. Did you have anything you wanted to say, sir? Introduce yourself if anybody don't know you.
Hi, I'm BJ Hardy. I'm, I'm actually candidate over here for district judge for Justice Law and Justice C. Um, that he's retiring from. Not really here to politic. I just wanted to come and, and take part in the meeting, hear what y'all had going on. Because I'm, quite frankly, I'm asking to become part of your community, uh, if others see fit. Just a little bit about me, though. Um, I have a passion for the schools. In Pulaski County, I'm a prosecutor, county attorney's office. Entire time I've been at that office for the past seven and a half years, I've dealt in juvenile court. Handled all the juvenile criminal offenses as well as all the child abuse and neglect cases in family court. You all do an important, important job, um, with what you do every day when you see kids, when you love those kids, um, when you show them that your community is there for them. And that's what I've taken from this meeting is, it's one of the best meetings I've been a part of in a while. Um, because I see how important, um, you all are in the community, just five events I go to every weekend, every, every week. But I see how important those kids truly are to you all. Um, and they're important to me. Um, and you all are important to me as well. Um, I hope to have the opportunity to work closer with you all as a judge over here. Because as I said, uh, with what I've done, I have that background. I see how important, how important the schools are, um, in our communities, not just in, for the court system. Court system is, is there as a last resort. You all, um, in my opinion, the, the education system and our churches locally play the biggest role in kids' lives. So thank you all for what you do. Thanks for just letting me show up and listen to me a part.
Thank you. Uh, the only other thing I wanted to say is, um, if you would check on our board hours, our training hours, just as a reminder.
I will, I will send out an email if, if you need.
Case I need to scramble and do it.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Gone there, thought of that.
Uh, Mr. Tom, you're back our head and I do appreciate you. I just wanted you to know.
Yes. He's always looking out for our kids and staff.
Uh, you know, talking about attendance, Marcus. When your child comes home on Friday and they're all bummed out because Saturdays, they don't get to go to school. That's always refreshing. That's a good sign. And I hope that, I hope, yeah. So I hope that, uh, I hope all of our kids are excited come Monday morning to go to schools. And I know that, um, it always starts at the, you know, uh, in the school building, but you got leaders at every level. And I appreciate Ms. Carrie. I appreciate all of you. I appreciate your staff. I think about the cafeteria staff, you know, uh, feeding, feeding somebody is the key to happiness. I've always thought that. So, you know, you get their bellies full, then they're happy, you know.
You can't teach a hungry child. I mean, you just cannot teach a hungry child. So it's very important.
Uh, nothing else being said, I need a motion to adjourn.